Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett, excused. Paul Mendez, excused. Kim Larriman, excused. Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal, excused. Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are five members present. We do have a form.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers that are appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations of the city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block ground allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Spectrum Cable PSC Channel 191 and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also recorded and you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on demand link and make your selection of the meeting you wanted to listen to there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you can follow along with the meeting. And at this time, I'd like to ask you to silence your cell phones to prevent any interruptions in our meeting. ... hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it'll be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration regarding any of the items on this agenda? Let the record show there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record also show that there were no declarations. We, as the Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and make better recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get your facts and opinions placed onto the official record of the city council that they will use to make their decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. To start tonight's agenda, we have approval of the meeting minutes. We actually have two meeting minutes from the previous two Planning Commission meetings in January where we had two meetings. The first meeting minutes is January 19th, 2023 meeting minutes. This was mailed to the commissioners in advance and I would either, if there are any comments or questions, or I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
All motion to approve the minutes?
Great. Do you have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Crutchfield moved and Commissioner Torres seconded. All those in favor of meeting minutes, say aye. Approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Let the record show that the January 19th, 2023 meeting minutes passed unanimously or were approved unanimously. The second set of meeting minutes is for the January 25th Planning Commission meeting. This was a much more lengthy and detailed Planning Commission meeting, so it certainly, if you have comments or questions, I would certainly entertain those and then we can move to approval of the meeting minutes.
I do have two comments. One is on CPA 2022-001 Kidwell. I noted my concern about encouraging commercial development across the street from established low-density residential development and felt that we received some notable objection from some of those neighbors. I felt the designation should front burns rather than Road 100, reducing traffic conflict on Road 100, minimizing adverse effects on established residential neighborhoods across Road 100. And for those reasons, I voted no on the change, but the minutes did not contain any reference to my comment or the fact that I voted no. And I wish to move to amend the minutes by adding a paragraph just to summarize that the concerns I expressed and the no vote attributed to me. CPA 2022-003, the Brochi Project. And I felt that, I noted the taxpayer had significant investment in this public infrastructure and planning for industrial development south of A Street for many years and it's finally being realized. And I feel that it's a major fundamental mistake to place 200 acres of residential development in the middle of this and dilute that unique industrial development that's finally underway. I think the Brochi development concept can be placed in other areas of the community, but the industrial development cannot. I think the Brochi concept and Terra Vida is a wonderful place. That's not in dispute. I think it's needed. I think it's, there's no question about that. But for the same reasons I said, we would not recommend to put industrial development in the midst of an established residential area. So I believe the comprehensive plan designation for industrial development south of A Street should not be changed. And I just moved to amend the minutes by adding some paragraph, probably not that lengthy, but to reflect the concerns I expressed. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe we need a motion. We can just include her comments in the minutes or do we need to vote on amending?
Yeah, I, excuse me, I think a vote to amend would be in order.
Okay.
Definitely.
All right. So it's been moved by Commissioner Crutchfield to amend the meeting minutes with her comments that she felt not reflected in the record. Do I have a second? Or are there any other discussion, I should also say, on this item?
I just have one clarification. This is Commissioner Torres.
Okay.
I just want to make sure, I thought we, there is a notation of that the motion passed by six to one vote, so I think that that reflected your no, but I just want to make sure that that's clear.
On the six to one, that was, that was on CPA 20022. I did vote for the Brochi project. I asked Rick if there's any way to amend my vote or change at this time and I, I don't know if there is, but. So the one that I voted nay on was the initial project with Kidwell, but I did vote yes on Brochi. After thinking about it further and kind of, you know, really pondering this, I felt like I would like that to be reflected in the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so we have, it's been moved, but we have not had a second. We've had other comments. I will remind the commissioners that, you know, we simply provide a recommendation to council. There are other opportunities for you as a commission member or as for private citizens to talk to the council when they bring this issue up. So that would be another course of action that I would encourage commissioners and citizens alike to just say, hey, I want to express my concern with this issue. So we are only recommenders to the city council. It's not our vote that matters. Or it's not our vote that solidifies this decision. I like to think we matter, but it's not our vote that solidifies the decision. So I, even though we may not, you know, you may have changed your mind or thought it through better, I would still encourage you to, you know, express that with city council, either at the meeting, in the public hearing, or with individual council members themselves. Does that make sense?
It does. Thank you.
Yep. Great. Okay. Moving on from that, I would still entertain a motion for either approval of the meeting minutes from January 25th or further questions or comments. I so move. It's been moved by Commissioner Handler. Do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Campos, I second it.
We got two seconds. Commissioner Handler and Commissioner Torres seconded, as well as I think that was Commissioner Mendez on the phone. All those in favor of approval of the meeting minutes for January 25th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Thank you. Let it show, that the record shows that the meeting minutes passed unanimously. All right, with that, we do not have any old business and we do not have any public hearings, so we get to move right. Oh, sorry. Is my thing not correct? I have none and none in old business public hearing.
The revised agenda contains Shoreline Master Program update as a public hearing.
Sorry. So is that a workshop then? Or is that a public?
Public hearing.
Okay. So our first, I guess we will have a public hearing. The first public hearing is a report on the Shoreline Master Program periodic update. If you're like me and you have an old agenda, that was a workshop item, but it's actually a public hearing item that we will hear a presentation on from staff or consultants and then we will open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
White Bluffs Consulting, Mr. Ben Floyd will give the commission a brief on this. This is fairly, fairly fresh. You saw or heard a presentation last month and you probably know that it's a state mandated heavy policy change to incorporate the mandated updates to the Shoreline Master Program as well as some issues that have come up during the comprehensive plan process. So with that, I think Mr. Floyd will go over the particulars of the revisions.
Excellent. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Floyd.
How about that? Well, thank you, Rick. It's good to be with you again. We were here on the 19th of January and I went over an overview of the items that we were going to cover tonight. Now we're actually going to go through those revisions. I'm trying to figure out how do I get out of the PowerPoint and into the Word file? John, can I get an assist?
John, can we get some assist?
Bear with me just a sec. So I know this may seem like it's going to be a clunky way to go through this by actually going through the Word file. I believe you also have a hard copy of the Word file with you. In the memo that summarizes what we're going to cover tonight, I've, I'm basically going to follow the summary of changes, the Shoreline Master Program section. And again, these are what we talked conceptually about last meeting. We were here in January and now we're just going to show you the actual language. So bear with me. Laura, can you grab me my other glasses? Then I won't have to do this. One more thing. They're on the side of my backpack. So these changes in red, underline text, this is the new text that's being added. So this first item, these are exceptions. These are things that do not require a shore, thank you, a shoreline substantial development permit or really any kind of approval from the city. So what we're looking at here is, and we talked about some of these last time, but interior building improvements. If you have a shoreline, a home or a structure within the shoreline and you're just doing interior stuff, you don't have to require a permit, you don't need a permit for that. Maintenance, removing structures if you're not going to redevelop it, pollution items. So I'm on page 21. I know this may be a little hard to follow.
Can you refresh the commissioners? I believe the shoreline is, the shoreline area is the first 200 feet from the water.
200 feet from the ordinary high water mark. Yep. So it's just that area or associated wetlands, like if a wetland area, for instance, out on the west part of the city, as the river kind of makes the bend and starts heading north, there's a large Corps of Engineers wetland complex. And in that case, the, the associated wetlands bumps out the shoreline jurisdiction in some cases, like up to 500 feet because it includes that associated wetland. But in general, it's 200 feet. So transportation projects. So these are basically things that are already either permitted through a separate process or just don't require a permit. And so to be clear about these, we've consolidated them all into one area. The next section we're going to go to is 290180, which is the definitions. And so then I'm going to go to page 30. We deleted, so there were a lot of definitions that were related to the flood hazard zone. And these definitions are already covered in a separate area of the code for the city. So they, they didn't need to be in here, so we took a lot of those out. So that's what the strikeouts are in most cases. Or there was maybe just a mistake where we included a definition that wasn't used anywhere in the Shoreline Master Program.
Where, where are the other places they are in city code?
In the city's floodplain regulation.
The floodplain regula, okay, thank you.
Yep. So one of the things that we added in the definition of development, and this is on page 30, is development does not include dismantling or removing structures if there's no other associated development or redevelopment. So again, that's a clarification that actually came out in the law and we updated it to make sure that it's also included in your Shoreline Master Program. Am I, am I going too fast? Okay. So now I'm going to go to pages 36 and 37. So we added in some additional definitions. So we're talking about non-conforming lots, non-conforming development in texts that we're adding into the Shoreline Master Program. And so we also want to define what we mean when we refer to those terms. So non-conforming development or non-conforming structure means an existing structure that was lawfully constructed at the time it was built, but is no longer fully consistent with the present regulations.
Is that a grandfather scenario then?
Basically a grandfather. It's like a legal, legally established at the time it was permitted, but no longer in compliance and with today's standards, but still legal. And that could be that maybe the structure is fine and up to code, but maybe the, the home or structure was too close to the river, for example, and a larger setback would be in place today if it were to be built now. And also it covers like height, you know, maybe it was built higher than, than, than the current standard. So we wanted to describe what that is, non-conforming development, non-conforming structure. And then same thing with a non-conforming lot. You may have a lot that exists that is smaller than the current zoning would, would require, but again, we don't want it, because it's, it was established legally at the time it was platted, for example, then you would still be able to have the opportunity to develop that. And that's what this says. It just talks about what a lot, the dimensional requirements, maybe less than the required width or depth or area due to subsequent changes to the master program. So another definition, and you'll see these terms as we get into the Shoreline Master Program, why it's important to have the definitions here. And then non-conforming use, again, the same thing. It's a use that wouldn't necessarily be applied. So like, you know, maybe you have a shoreline residential area and you have a commercial building in there that wouldn't be consistent today, but it was already there, so that use would be appropriate. All right. Now I'm going to jump way back to page 160. So we're going to section 2901630, which is a new section, non-conforming lots. And this just says, hey, if you have a non-conforming lot, the city is still going to allow you to develop it within shoreline jurisdiction. You have, you have to conform to all the other requirements of the Shoreline Master Program, the city's program, and the Shoreline Management Act, but you're allowed to develop that property. And that was something that wasn't clear in your Shoreline Master Program prior to this proposed amendment. Any questions about that? I know this isn't the most riveting material that you've had to work with and, and this is maybe a little bit of a redundancy because we talked through these pretty well last time, but I just wanted to see how it's going to, the actual language is. And from here going forward, it'll be more efficient for you.
Just one quick question on that, just to make sure I'm understanding. The non-conforming piece that you're talking about is just the size, but all, all other things are, are going to be made to conform to the current standard, right?
Yes, right. So the lot may be smaller than what you would normally allow.
Yeah, like the size.
But the setback, the height limitation and other requirements. Let's say maybe they want to provide some access along the shoreline and propose to take out some vegetation. They would have to mitigate for that vegetation on that property as well. So they'd have to set aside some other property or maybe plant some repairing vegetation to offset that access.
Okay, thank you.
As an example. You bet. Good question. All right. Now I'm going to go to page 168, This is the fair market value. I told you that the, the Shoreline substantial development permit requirement is based upon a cost threshold. And when we did this back in 2015, the threshold was $6,416. And today it's 8,500. So you can see what kind of inflation we've experienced in just a few years. Going two pages down to the dock. So the same principle applies to docks and when you have to get a shoreline substantial development permit. And I realize there's additional rules on the McNary Pool, Mary Reservoir, through the Corps of Engineers for permitting on docks, but this is, this applies as well. So basically, we're looking at 22,500 for docks that serve two or more residences and $11,200 for all other docks. And so that's the, again, a higher threshold. And that's something we've added this, however, if subsequent construction occurs within five years of completion of the prior construction and the fair market value goes above that. So in other words, you can't say, well, I'm going to build my dock and I'm going to do part of it and I'm going to keep it under like 11,200. And then two years from now, I'm just going to add on to it and, and try to avoid that threshold. So this limits that.
I assume what you're saying is the threshold means if it goes over that threshold, it's under the jurisdiction of the shoreline.
It requires a shoreline substantial development permit.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. And then we're going still down further, 172. And this is the American, with Americans with Disabilities Act provision that we talked about last time. So the external or internal retrofitting of an existing structure with the exclusive purpose of compliance with the ADA or to otherwise provide physical access to the structure by individuals with disabilities, this is also an exemption. You don't have to get a shoreline substantial development permit for that activity. And that is the extent of the changes. There are other little, you'll see little kind of just formatting, little cleanup. I just call those, they're non-substantive cleanup little items that are also throughout this document. But that is the information that I wanted to share with you tonight on the Shoreline Master Program. And I just wanted to really briefly go through the schedule, if that's okay. So we'll be working with Rick and Jacob to take the Shoreline Master Program and start the 60-day review process, if you're supportive of that, for later in this month or maybe early March at the latest. And that's just to start the state agency review of these proposed minor changes that we're suggesting for your Shoreline Master Program. So that would go from end of February, early March, to end of April, early May. And then we'll also be conducting a joint public hearing with Washington State Department of Ecology, and we hope to have that hearing held here at the Planning Commission level. And we're looking at either April 20th or May 18th as a backup, depending upon agenda size and, and timing for when things actually get submitted to the state. And then after that, we'll prepare a comment response matrix and we'll ask, you'll, you'll make your recommendation to the council. We'll also ask Washington State Department of Ecology, that also has to approve this document, for them to make an initial determination whether the city is in compliance with the Shoreline Management Act and the state regulations for, for the changes that we're proposing. They'll make a determination back and then the council will accept, will consider your recommendation, the feedback from the state, the response to comments, and take action to adopt hopefully the updated Shoreline Master Program in late June or, or maybe in July, depending upon the, again, the timing of it. So that's the path forward. Any questions about that schedule?
I thought there was like a deadline that we were also trying to meet, right, for the state. Does that schedule put us in time for that?
Yeah. So the, the deadline is June 30th for the grant funding. And we're trying to hit that. That's why, so the council, if we can, if we can schedule it so that the council's able to take action in June, that'll be great. And, I mean, we're going to help you finish it out anyway, even if the grant funding's already gone. But we'll hope that we'll have 99.6% of the work done and then there's just a little bit of support that we can provide to, to finish it out. Thank you.
Excellent. Commissioners, particularly on the phone, any questions on this plan and this public hearing item? Or any feedback for staff or the consultant? Okay. I think this is a public hearing item, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. If there's anyone here or on the phone that wishes to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and address, city of address for the record. Come on up.
Hi. My name's Scott Larriman, 6514 West Park Street. Been a resident of Pasco for over 20 years. Have four children, ages six to 16. And just talking about, you know, grant money here and things, safety. I was, I'm going to tell you about the second most dangerous thing I do with my family, probably on a weekly basis, after trying to navigate the Road 68 and Court Street intersection there. But I believe there's a roundabout being worked there. It's, it's that last section of the Sacagawea Riverfront Heritage Trail, right, from Wade Park going west. The, the width of that is five, six feet, maybe. The, the width of that is five, six feet, maybe. I, I glanced through this, and I saw stuff about getting exemptions, getting exceptions to ADA, et cetera. But even just, I think if you're going to build a trail now, right, you go in ten-foot, twelve-foot is kind of the standard that you would build a mixed-use trail. And there's a history, I think Rick and City Council knows. Back in two thousand nine, I believe, you guys can correct me here, but two thousand nine, two thousand ten, I believe the city had all the permits in place, all the money, all the grants in place, to finish that, because that is the last section of that twenty-six mile loop in the Tri-Cities that has not been widened. And then Hurricane Katrina hit, and I believe the Corps of Engineer put a moratorium on Touching Dykes, and it put a delay on it. Then by two thousand fifteen, met with the, the City Council at a meeting in Chihuahua, track with the community and said, I believe the moratorium had been lifted, but at that time, there was no funding. The grants had all expired, no longer grants. My request, we have Pride of Pasco, I see back there, one of the safest cities in Washington. That doesn't just go to, to, you know, law enforcement, crime. I, I go up there with my kids. My head is on a swivel every time I go up there. I see accidents, people running into each other, bikes speeding by. You're constantly looking backwards, forward, with dogs, kids, wheelchairs, bikes. It's dangerous. And the plan's out there, right? I think if that thing's a trapezoid, you take it down, whatever the plan was, four feet. You take it down four feet, and it widens it to twenty-some feet, twelve? Take it down four feet, I think there was a plan for six feet, two, and it'd go to twenty, maybe. But the details are there. Money for infrastructure and grants, I believe, now are out there more than ever. So I guess, what can we do? What, what's holding us up right now? Is it just finding grants? Are permits still valid? Why are we asking for exceptions to keep a crown jewel of the Tri-Cities, the Sacagawea Heritage Trail, to keep that one last section when all the rest of it's been completed for over ten years? So any recommendations you guys can make to this? Or if there are real barriers to doing this beyond just going and finding the money? Transparency, I'd like to know what those barriers are beyond finding the grants and money. Safety first. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I'm not sure that this, the Shoreline Master Program directly impacts the ability to build a trail. I agree with you. I live in that part of the trail, and I would love to see it better and wider and improved, but I don't know that this particular document has scope on it. That would be something that this document doesn't provide away for us. And to, to address that, but I appreciate your comments for being here. And correct me if I'm wrong, Steph.
No, you're not wrong. I'm a neighbor of Scott's, and I have the same concerns. As a matter of fact, my wife took a tumble on that path as well, on, off of her bike, and she hasn't ridden a bike since. But it's a really convoluted story, because it involves the Corps of Engineers and their funding, their permitting process, their assessment of the levy itself. And it's just extremely complicated, and it moves at glacial speed.
I think we only wish that this had complete control over that issue, right? It would make, probably make it a lot easier, but this trophy doesn't have a purport over that. Are there any other questions or feedback from the commissioners for staff or the consultant?
Maybe, Rick, I'm just not, I'm not sure about this, but maybe we need to put more pressure on the Corps of Engineers to step up.
It's being tried from a legislative standpoint, yes.
All right, since this is still a public hearing, are there anyone, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item tonight for the public hearing? Are we on the phone? Anybody? All right, second call for the public hearing to speak on this item. And final third call. All right, so next steps, I don't know, is there, do we need a vote for, to commence the sixty-day review? Or is this just a continuation to the next thing? We don't need a vote or anything? Great. Well, then we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item. And we'll go ahead and move to our workshop item, which my update agenda says is the Home, Home American Rescue Program ARP update memo from staff, that's a workshop item.
It is, and, excuse me, Kristen Webb, our block grant coordinator, administrator, will give the commission an update on the, this particular facet of the home program.
Awesome, welcome, Kristen.
If I can get to the PowerPoint.
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commission. I am Kristen Webb, the CDBG's Community Development Block Grant Administrator, for those that don't know me. The city of Kennewick, Richland, and Pasco formed the Tri-Cities Home Consortium. Tonight, I am bringing to you an update on the Home ARP Plan. ARP stands for American Recovery Plan. Back in two thousand and twenty-two, the Home Consortium received a grant allocation of two-point-three million dollars to create a plan to help the homelessness in the Tri-Cities through qualified populations defined by HUD as homeless, at risk of becoming homeless, fleeing, or attempting to flee domestic violence/human trafficking, or other populations, persons at great risk of housing instability. Since August, we've been working to finalize the consortium's Home ARP Plan. Tonight, I'm sharing our progress and seeking your comments as we near a finalization. So on the screen, it talks about when we started. We had meetings with the stakeholders, which were people who dealt with homeless here in the Tri-Cities, whether it was public housing, domestic violence, or any of the other nonprofit agencies that deal with them on a day-to-day basis. Next slide. As with all HUD programs, the funds are extremely restrictive and can only be used for these criterias: production or preservation of affordable rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, supportive services, purchase and non-developed, non, purchase and develop non-congregated shelter, and nonprofit operating capacity building. Cloud Burst, which is the consultant that the Home Consortium has been working with, identified these top priorities. So we basically had meetings with the stakeholders, and then we actually sent out a survey. During that survey and with the meetings, these were the needs and gaps that we found to be the most top priorities. Rental assistance, lack of supportive services, gaps in nonprofit capacity, and lack of affordable housing. Over nine thousand extremely low-income households experience severe housing problems, including substandard living conditions, crowding, and/or excessive cost burdens. During the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, roughly eight hundred and seventy-three enrolled students were homeless. The eighty percent in this graph represents students who have two households living in the same unit. On this slide, it shows a hundred and twenty-four percent increase in housing costs between two thousand and seven and two thousand and twenty-two. And with this graph, a fifty percent increase in housing costs for renters between two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and twenty-two. So in two thousand and sixteen, it was about twelve hundred and two dollars, and in two thousand and twenty-two, it's jumped up to eighteen hundred dollars. To afford a two-bedroom unit, a person would need to make more than minimum wage or work more than forty hours a week. These are the definitions of low income based on household sizes per HUD. Notice the annual income to afford a two-bedroom unit falls between very low income and extremely low income for a four-person family. Over the past five years, apartment vacancy rates for Benton Franklin Counties have remained between one and two percent, which is considered a severe shortage of rental housing. Within Tri-Cities for the entire year of two thousand and twenty-one, over a thousand people experience homelessness, and shelter opportunities are inadequate. There's non-permanent beds, emergency shelter and transitioning houses, and families are split up because there are no shelters that serve families with men slash adolescent boys. So right now, the Union Gospel Mission, if you have a family and they have adolescent boys, the boys will get sent to the men's side, and the rest of the family goes to the women's side. When considering these challenges, a new shelter is not the answer. If we were to create a new congregated shelter, there would, we would have to make sure that somebody had the availability to take ownership and operate. There's no ongoing funding assistance that we've identified. And then of the two shelters currently in Pasco, Union Gospel Mission Shelter is underutilized, and usage data entrants for the new Low Barrier Shelter, which is the new Catholic chair, family charities, one on Twentieth and Lewis. They haven't opened yet, so obviously, we don't have any of their data. With supportive services, these are the needs that nonprofits currently strive to meet. However, some orga, organizations lack the staffing or proper training necessary. A lot of the supportive services explained to us that they would get staff. Staff wouldn't understand how to do case management. They didn't know how to do counseling. There wasn't money to do training. So there, they have no funds to be able to provide these services. The consortium's preliminary recommendation consists of, these funds are available only to nonprofit organizations. And organizations who are interested in applying, once we finish with our public comment period, we will be sending out an RFP. It'll be publicized in the newspapers, as well as in the Spanish newspaper, on all three cities' websites. And anybody that's interested in applying for funds, they should apply. These are broken down as to how we're going to split up the two-point-three million dollars. With supportive services, affordable housing, nonprofit operating costs, nonprofit capacity billing, and then we do have to set aside fifteen percent for administration funding. Once HUD does approve this plan, if we find that we're not getting people to apply safe or supportive services, those monies can be moved to another one of the four qualified populations. So I will be sharing any comments from tonight at our consortium staff meeting, which we do have next on February twenty-first. And if you have any additional comments after tonight and before March seventh, you can send them directly to the city of Richland. I have included Tony's email address on there. She's the one that will be collecting all the comments that will be put in the plan before it gets submitted to HUD. So if you guys have any comments.
Thank you. Commissioners, any comments or feedback? For Kristen Webb?
Yeah, this is the Commissioner, Campus.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. My question is, I know that supportive services is getting the bigger chunk, and I agree with it wholeheartedly, hundred percent. But what the supportive services, is there going to be with that funds as allocated for that? Is there going to be an emphasis on which supportive services that we're looking for and giving most to, or is it just going to be any supportive services?
Well, basically, it'll be whoever applies. They do have to submit an application, and they would have to submit a plan with their application as to how they plan on spending the funds. We obviously are not just going to give it to individuals that are looking to just, you know, pay all their staff. We're wanting them to come up with a plan as to how they're actually going to help the homeless in the Tri-Cities. So it just basically depends on who applies.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that answer.
Will it be administered similar to how we do like the block grant? Where we'll go through as a group of the applicants, and we'll make a decision based on this program?
Well, what'll happen is, because Richland is the home, they're the lead administrators, so what'll happen is the consortium, the three cities will actually get together and review all the applications, along with our consultant, and then it will be determined how we split up that money.
So the applicants can be from any of the three cities, the programs benefiting any of the three areas?
Yes, as long as they are nonprofit.
Great. Thank you.
And we actually do have thirty years to spend this money, but we're kind of hoping that it doesn't take that long. It probably won't with two-point-three million, so.
Commissioners, any other questions or feedback?
And today, we did email you guys the plan. So if you guys have any comments during that time, you can either send them to Tony, or you can send them to me, and I'll forward them on. So you have until March seventh. And at March seventh, the city of Richland will be holding a public hearing for any final comments, and then hopefully making a recommendation to submit to HUD.
So for applicants, can they, you know, like different nonprofits? If they, if they have a different purpose, but they have homelessness as part of what they serve, they can apply as long as they can justify this is going to support, support services for the needs of, and it contributes to homelessness?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
One other quick question. And do, is there a requirement that all three cities benefit? Or does that, like, if an organization says, hey, we address homelessness in Pasco only, would that disqualify them?
No. Nope. We can't, we can't make people apply. And, you know, anytime that people do apply, when there's federal funds involved, there's a lot of documentation, there's a lot of requirements, there's a lot of monitoring. So that may sway other organizations to not apply who haven't dealt with federal funds before.
Great, thank you. Any commissioners, anything else? All right, I think we will move from the workshop to other business, and there's a Housing Action and Implementation Plan that's next up on the other business topic.
Thank you, Chair. And this, this is really just an update for the commission. The, the city is performing a housing capacity plan, which is going to look at both housing affordability and, and home opportunities here in Pasco. It's going to take on a very inventory-heavy look at what we have available in terms of rentals, homeownerships, single-room occupancy units, short-term rentals. It's a very in-depth dive into what we can do to increase both housing affordability, but mostly housing options here in Pasco. You can see by the, I'm not going to read all this to you, but you can see by the, the slide on the screen that there weren't very many communities that applied for the state-approved funding. However, we did, and we received it, and that's what we're using for our consultant's assistance in this regard. Again, the goals of the Housing Action Plan are to encourage varied housing opportunities and affordability. It, it is intended to be a policy manual to help Pasco meet its housing demands. If you recall from our work with the Comprehensive Plan, we need about fifteen thousand additional housing units over the next, well, now it's roughly the next eighteen years. It was twenty years, a few years ago, but, and then hopefully, it will provide a map so that we can implement things that work here. Not just on paper, but things that actually work. I just wanted to brief the commission. We did hold our first workshop back in the month of December, and it was very well-attended, actually. I was very surprised. But we filled up the community room at the police station, and there was a lot of input from affected stakeholders. We partnered with a team of students, master students from the New York University Wagner School of Public Policy this past winter. They are providing the bulk of the inventory for our consultant, which is kind of a surprise gift, so to speak. They're doing a very good job. And then we intend, of course, to have additional public comment and engagement opportunities next month, and again in April. So it's roughly... So it's roughly maybe 30% done, I guess, if, if we were to take an estimate. We expect that probably by at least October, we'll have the housing capacity plan completed. And I'll try to answer any questions. I'm kind of pinch-ating here tonight, so be easy on me.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for staff? Rick on this? So will the output be like a report and, and like from the consultants and these workshops? It'll kind of, and I think I remember when the report would also have like a roadmap of what we're going to do, kind of thing, implementation?
Yes, certainly. And we'll probably end up incorporating much of that into the housing element in our comprehensive plan.
Great. Anything else, commissioners? All right, thank you. And with that, I think, are there's any other business for, for the staff? All right. Then I would entertain a motion for adjournment and a second for adjournment.
I will second.
You got to move first.
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. The meeting's adjourned at 7:22 PM. Thank you, everyone.